Okay. I'm -- welcome, everybody, to the annual organizational meeting of the Ryimec Central School District Board of Education. Today is July 9th, 2013. And as a result of the annual meeting and vote held on May 21st, 2013, we have one returning member of the board, Lisa Rosenthal, and we welcome two new members who were also elected that day, Laura Schilk and Deirdre Dalbert. So I would first ask Ms. Rosenthal to come over and take the oath. That's right. Okay. I, Lisa Rosenthal.
I, Lisa Rosenthal.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And if you would sign.
Oh.
And Laura Schilk? Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And if you could sign.
I, Deirdre Dalbert.
I, Deirdre Dalbert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay. And if you would sign. And we welcome Lisa and Laura to the Annual Organizational Meeting. And now I would ask for nominations for President of the Board of Education for 2013-2014. And Deirdre Burns? Do I have a second?
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, can I see a vote?
All those in favor, I think?
Is that enough?
No.
All in favor say aye again, just for the record.
Aye.
Thank you. So this is why I really like trying this out.
Thank you, Meg. And thanks, everybody, for your support. I will do my best this year and continue to with your support. We can get a lot done, so thank you. I would like to move to table the nomination for Vice President due to inadequate time for trustees to consider nominations, so that's my motion is to table the nomination for Vice President. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lisa. All those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
That's unanimous, so we'll move that to a future meeting. Do I have to do the oath of office now, Meg? It's on a...
Ah, yes. I, Deirdre Burns.
I, Deirdre Burns.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
President of the Board of Education of the Ryimec Central School District.
President of the Board of Education of the Ryimec Central School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And if you would sign.
Now, are there any nominations for the position of Executive Committee Member for the 2013-2014 school year for the Dutchess County School Board Association? I will nominate myself.
Second.
Seconded, I know that was quick. Seconded by Mark. All those in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
I will do that to the best of my ability. I can't make every meeting, but it's me. At your place are other leadership positions and committee assignments or the other committee assignments, so there is a paper with a chart at your place. And I believe that's suitable, that met almost everyone's, at least two out of three of people's choices on that. I don't think I have to go through all the list, but does anyone have any questions about that? Okay. And then Lisa Rosenthal has offered to continue as our liaison to the Community Coalition for Ryimec Youth should they gear up and start meeting more. Mark Fleischauer has volunteered to continue to meet as part of the Ryimec collaboration when that meets. I have offered to continue to represent the board on the Comprehensive District Education Plan Committee. And I am meeting tomorrow with Jen Shear, who's the head of the Ryimec Science Foundation, to talk about what their expectations are for a liaison position, so we can defer that to another time. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about any of the committees? Okay, well, that was pretty easy, so thank you, everybody. And I guess we're just going to do the TBD, even though we don't have a name here, Joe. May I have a motion to appoint, to be determined, as Clerk of the Board of Education for the 2013-14 school year?
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane Quinteros. Any discussion about that? All those in favor? That's unanimous.
I was going to say, we hope to have that position filled by next June, so we're working on it real hard, and we'll let you...
May I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale as School District Treasurer for the 2013-2014 school year, with the appointment of Elizabeth Van Kuren as Deputy School District Treasurer for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Laura Magley as Central Treasurer, Pro Tem for the Extra Classroom Activity Fund for the 2013-14 school year, no additional stipend.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments?
Just want to mention that the reason for that is that Laura will be transferring, we will be transferring Laura at her request to the Senior Typist position in the Special Education Office, being vacated by the retirement of Candy Potter, so sometime midsummer Laura will be going over there, and then Ned Davenport gets back from his vacation on Friday. He'll start the process of recruiting and interviewing for a replacement senior typist in the high school office.
Okay, great, thank you. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Susan McCormick as School Tax Collector for the 2013-14 school year, no additional stipend.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Steve Bangert as Claims Auditor at $26,46 per hour for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Thomas Burnell, the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services, as District Purchasing Agent for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Marvin Kreps, Director of Curriculum Instruction, as Chief Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer for the 2013-14 school year with compensation per contractual agreement.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Christine Natale, District Treasurer, as an additional Title IX, Title VII Coordinator, Title VI Coordinator, and Non-Discrimination Complaint Officer on an as-needed basis for the 2013-14 school year with compensation for related investigations at her hourly rate.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions?
I have a question. Is this basically that she would do what you would do if you're not available to do it, or...
No, this is with Marvin. She's the offset with Marvin.
Oh, Marvin, sorry.
So this is the female counterpart to Marvin. If someone wants to talk to a female, Christine would be the person who would do that.
Okay, got it.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Richard Zip, Director of Special Education, as Section 504 ADA Coordinator for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark, seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as Designated Educational Official for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as Age Coordinator for the 2013-14 school year, no extra stipend.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? Yes.
What is that?
It's actually kind of a joke that they appointed me to that position because I'm the oldest person in this organization that they can find. Yeah, probably not, but my understanding is that if there are any issues relative to age discrimination complaints or whatnot, then I'm the go-to person on that. Not that I've ever exercised my authority in that capacity, but we never know.
How does that differ from what Richard Zip is going to be doing as the ADA coordinator?
Well, he's, that's Americans with Disabilities Act and 504, so Section 504 and ADA are related to special education.
Okay.
Deals with disabilities, not...
All right, you're right.
Age stuff.
Although there's a lot of parallel.
Well, there are a number of overlaps here, but...
They fulfill different legal requirements. All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to designate Richard Zip to attend last chance resolution sessions or mediation sessions required by the IDEA with the authority to execute settlement agreements on behalf of the district, following consultation with Superintendent of Schools where practicable, and notification to the Board President or Vice President in his/her absence of the contents of any settlement agreement for the 2013-2014 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the following additional appointments. A, a motion to approve Bonnie Murphy, BMS RHS School Nurse, and Mary Skeen, CLS School Nurse, as Attendance Supervisors for the 2013-14 school year at no additional salary as included in the duties of School Nurse. B, motion to appoint the workplace at St. Francis Hospital to provide school physician services at the cost of $8,208 for the 2013-14 school year. C, motion to appoint Sheldon Teeter, Director of Facilities, as Asbestos Designee, Chemical Hygiene Officer pursuant to OSHA, and School Pesticide Representative for the School District for 2013-14 school year. D, motion to appoint the District Clerk as Records Access Officer, the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services as the Records Management Officer, and the Superintendent as Records Appeals Officer for the 2013-14 school year, no additional salary. And E, motion upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to designate Dr. Edwin Davenport, Mr. John Chemnitzer, and Mr. Brett King as Dignity Act Coordinators for their respective schools as required by the Dignity for All Students Act legislation and by Section 9 of Board of Education Policy 5300 Code of Conduct to lead and coordinate the effort of each school's Dignity for All Students Act team in proactively addressing and responding to any and all incidents of bullying, discrimination, hazing, and/or harassment as identified in this state legislation and board policy.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any question about any of these? Diane?
The Attendance Supervisor, is that new, or is that just the place where the attendance clerk is?
No, it's got nothing to do with attendance, but they're responsible for verifying attendance and absence, whatnot. And that's been here forever, and this position's been here forever.
Any other questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to direct the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services to make payments of A, monies for investments; B, interest on bonds as becomes due; C, payments to redeem bonds as they become due; D, checks to cover payrolls and agency account deposits; E, utility bills; F, expense payments to employees; and G, payments under contractual agreements.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the following designations. A, motion to designate the M&amp;T Bank, NILAP, JP Morgan Chase, BNY Mellon, and Bankers Trust as the official depositories of funds for the School District for the 2013 school year. Other financial institutions will be brought to the board in the course of the year for approval of investment services if necessary. And B, motion to designate the Poughkeepsie Journal as the official district newspaper, with the Daily Freeman designated as the alternate official newspaper for the district for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Tom, I just wanted to ask, this is a non-binding motion, right? With M&amp;T Bank, if things change with collateral, we have options.
Oh, sure.
It's changed any time.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the following authorizations. Motion to authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Support Services and the District Treasurer to have access to the safe deposit box maintained by the school at the M&amp;T Bank for the 2013-14 school year. B, motion to authorize petty cash funds at the following locations and in the following amounts for the 2013-14 school year. The business office, $100, the custodian being the secretary to business administrator. At Chancer Livingston Elementary School, $100, the custodian being the elementary principal. At Oakley Middle School, $100, the custodian being the middle school principal. The interscholastic, $50, the athletic director being the custodian of that. At the CLS Kitchen, $10, the cook manager being the custodian. Oakley Middle School Kitchen, $60, the cook manager being the custodian. And the Ryimec High School Kitchen, $100, the cook manager being the custodian. C, motion to authorize Superintendent of Schools to approve transfers in budget codes up to $5,000 per transfer for the 2013-14 school year. D, motion to authorize Superintendent of Schools and/or Assistant Superintendent for Court Services as the payroll certification officers for the 2013-14 school year. E, motion to authorize the Superintendent of Schools to approve or disapprove all conference requests for the 2013-14 school year. F, motion to authorize Superintendent of Schools to apply for grants and aid for the School District, state, federal, foundation, and private sources for the 2013-14 school year. And G, motion to appoint Joseph L. Phelan as the Designee of the Board to make final residency determinations.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions about any of that? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to readapt all previous board policies and the code of ethics.
So moved.
By Mark.
Seconded by Diane.
Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve that the meetings of the Board of Education of the Ryimec Central School District be held on the dates indicated on the schedule submitted at 7:30 PM in the high school/middle school library for the 2013-14 school year, or in alternate locations and/or times as noted on the agenda.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. The next page has the list of those meetings. Anyone have any questions about any of that? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to adopt the per-mile reimbursement rate set by the Internal Revenue Service, which is currently .565 cents for approved use of personal vehicles on school business, subject to change of the internal revenue reimbursement rates.
So moved.
So moved by Mark. Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that effective July 1, 2013, through June 30, 2014, the Ryimec Central School District will waive the fingerprinting fee of $91.50 for all new employees who are hired to work less than 20 hours per week or receive a salary of $30,000 or less. The district will pay this fee.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to accept the list of New York State Certified Impartial Hearing Officers for Dutchess County for the 2013-14 school year as updated by the New York State Education Department in accordance with Section 200.311 of the Commissioner's Regulations for the purpose of conducting special education impartial hearings with compensation of such impartial hearing officers in accordance with board policy.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to appoint Shaw, Perleson, May, and Lambert, LLP, Attorneys at Law, as School Attorneys for the 2013-14 school year at a retainor fee of $30,000.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve all persons and positions required by law regulation to be bonded in the amount of $100,000 per employee per occurrence, $1 million per occurrence for the tax collector, and $1 million per occurrence for the treasurer for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark.
Seconded by Diane.
Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. And finally, may I have a motion to nominate Dottie Slattery to be Area Director for Area IX of the New York State School Boards Association.
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. All right. Thank you, everybody. That concludes our annual organizational meeting. We will move on now to our regular meeting. I have two of these, I guess. Okay. Does everyone have the one at your place? Okay, so I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Ryimec Central School District Board of Education, Tuesday, July 9, 2013. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the June 25, 2013, regular meeting?
So moved.
By Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions or comments about that? All those in favor? That's, that's everyone except Lisa, or, no, okay? It's up to you. It doesn't matter. You can accept them or not.
They're good.
Oh, you watch them, right? You're here. Okay. So that's everyone except Lisa, abstaining, Lisa Rosenthal. That motion passes. We now have an opportunity for public comment. Would any members of the public here like to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to reports and discussion. The first item is 2013-14 Board Goal Development Process. And so we, Joe, you have put in our packets goals the past several, 10 years?
11 years.
11 years. So that can be useful. We also, so we have our board workshop next Tuesday at 4:30. A meeting here?
In the...
Yeah, in the conference room. And the gentleman who is facilitating that meeting, Joe, everyone should have gotten an email from Joe. He's asking us to fill out a survey by Sunday.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll do that ahead of the meeting, and then it had been requested from me at the last meeting, but I haven't done it yet, to ask if people wanted to, like, send me any ideas about board goals for the coming year. So I'll send out that email as a reminder to you, but I think having these might help. So even if you just have, like, a thought, it doesn't have to be a well-developed paragraph or series of sentences, it just could be one issue, you know, their name or whatever. And then I guess I will hand them, you can get them to Robert Hendricks ahead of that meeting.
Yeah.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Anyone have any questions about that? Okay, great. I'm looking forward to it. Board committee reports?
Just all.
Oh, okay, that's when we'll do this. Diane?
Okay, so I'm just going to briefly go over the highlights of the risk assessment. Basically, the bigger items are listed in order. There was some discussion revolving around 1099 forms, and the takeaway message is if you think a 1099 should be issued, it's safer to issue it. There's no downside for the district. There's some learning or education that needs to be done on the W-9 side of things. So when we have a contract with a company over $600, they fill out a W-9 form, and they just really need to be filled out very accurately in alliance with IRS regulations, so that, that is what instigates the 1099 form. And that seems to be the point where it's frequently the contractor that doesn't know specifically how to classify themselves on the W-9 forms, so it's sort of an easy thing to fix.
So if you fill out a W-9, you get a 1099?
If you fill out a W-9 in a way that requires a 1099, you do. If you fill out a W-9 that's inconsistent in how you're classifying yourself because you don't know, say you're a partnership and you say you're a private company, but you're really, then you're just a name of the company, then it's confusing, and then if there isn't someone who's an expert in IRS rules receiving that, it becomes more The, any potential penalties for this is usually to correct the action. Sometimes there's a $50 fine for missed ones, but usually it's, as long as you correct the action, it seems that's the desired outcome. The second item is in regards to the sick-day buyback of retired health insurance. This is something that does not exist in our contracts anymore, but there are still retirees who had this contract when they retired, and so they had the option of their sick-day buybacks to be applied on a yearly basis after retirement towards their premiums and their health care, which actually, in retrospect, is technically income, taxable income. So we need to discuss it with employment lawyer of how to proceed with that, because taxable income requires social security and all the other things retroactively and proactively. And policies, I think, is, should just be deferred to the policy committee. It's, the tone of this message is very different than our discussion of the message. There are policies that we have that aren't standalone policies, but embedded in other policies, and it's not required that they're standalone policies. It just would be neater for the state or the auditors to go through and say, these are standalone policies. There seems to be some that we may not have, but I think this is something the policy committee can easily go through and confirm or make decisions on. The other ones were food services, I'm going to focus on it, on that more presentable. There's no reason to address that. The other ones were sort of smaller issues, and Tom is planning on a complete corrective action plan to address these, so we'll be following up on them next year for the committee. Any questions?
On the food service focused audit?
On the food service focused audit, when are you anticipating getting the report?
So we have the report, and we were just waiting for the first audit meeting, which we'll probably have next week or whenever we're all available now that we have a committee. And it seems that most of the information is accurate and it's pretty much ready for review.
There is one little thing that someone found that they would like to change in the report.
Okay.
It indicates that our cashiers and food service people don't know what a type-A lunch is. They know what it is. They know exactly what it is.
Okay.
They know what it is.
What is the next issue that they just weren't able to articulate it?
I think that's more of the issue of, they were given the instructions of how it is, but I think it's one of those things you had to continually repeat and repeat. And the other thing too, and it's something that we will be doing, is actually putting on the wall what a meal is, not only for our food service workers, but for the kids themselves to know, hey, I am getting a correct meal here. And they'll know, you know, this does qualify as a type-A meal or it doesn't. You know, there's certain things you have to take, the vegetable. I don't want a vegetable. Well, you've got to put it on the plate. If you don't, it doesn't count.
So to follow up on that, though, I can send a copy of the focused audit that we We can meet with the auditors and audit committee, and we can do the same kind of thing. We can present it to you from there, or we can have the auditors present the entire audit directly to the board, since this has been a big discussion of the board for several years. I think these conversations are sometimes easier to have in committee, which is more of a flow of conversation. But I can send it first, and if people have opinions, they can let me know.
Okay. And also, when the audit committee gets a chance to look at, if you have a recommendation about doing a presentation from the auditors to the board, when you guys have a chance to look at it, you might have an opinion about that that could guide us.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. Any other questions about the risk assessment? Thank you to the audit committee. Thank you to Tom and to Joe for the work you did following up on the risk assessment. But I know it was a long process this year, and it seems like some useful information has come out of it. So thanks for that work. And that was our only board committee, right? That was reported? Okay. Then we'll move on to our comments section. Does anyone have any good news? Well, I just want to welcome again Deirdre and Laura, and welcome back Lisa to the board. It's a nice addition. So thank you for volunteering and stepping up to the plate.
Glad to be here.
Yeah, very good. And feel free to ask questions at any time. Any other good news?
Yeah, there's not a lot of good newsy type stuff that happens this time of year, but I talked with Sheldon Teter, our director of facilities today, and he received a visit, maybe it was yesterday, from a couple of people from the Juilliard School of Music in Manhattan who have some connection to Rhinebeck, but they were here scouting our auditorium as a potential site for some, some kind of concert that they would like to do here over the next couple of years. And they were, they wanted to make sure that this auditorium would, you know, would be suitable for whatever kind of musical presentation it is. And that's not really the good news. Well, it's not bad news, but the good news is that having kind of tested the acoustics of the auditorium, they were very, very impressed with the auditorium acoustically, said that they felt it was as good as, if not better than, some college performance spaces, and were really, really anxious to try to lock in a date and bring their performance here. So it's good to hear, what is it, seven, eight years after the fact that it was actually designed well, and people who do this kind of thing for life's work are impressed with the acoustics of the room. So you can't say the same thing about some of the doors that were installed during that project and a few other little things here and there, but that was a big, a big deal building that space, and it's got rave reviews from those people that can hardly wait to put their presentation on here. So that is good news.
That's very good news. And it also is, you know, it provides an opportunity to just also reflect on that when that was built. We wanted to use it as a community space, and it has been used as a community space for a variety of activities. And that community is expanding even, and so it's good to take a moment to go, yeah, that was something we wanted to have happen, and it has, and that's great. So thank you for sharing that. Any other good news? All right. Then we move on to old business. I just have, oh, go ahead. Well, I just, the school law conference, Diane Lyons and Laura and Joe and myself, right, will be attending. So we'll give you an update on that. We'll have a busy day next Tuesday.
Yes. Yeah, we will.
All the school boards, all the time.
On that same topic, there is another school law conference.
Oh, this is a different one.
That's a different one.
Okay.
You have a flyer at your place, is the Mid-Hudson School Study Council does a school law conference each summer. The topics are different. It's in New Palt, so it's not quite the same, the same drive, but I just put it out there in case some of you who might be interested in attending this one, let me or Meg know if you are interested. I will be attending it. Or if you maybe wanted to go to the one in Albany and weren't able to swing that, this is an opportunity to get some of this information. But it's different information, so you could actually go to both if you're so inclined.
Is this a Friday?
Yes, it is, actually.
All right. Great. Any other old business?
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to raise the new board, a concept that the board discussed somewhat last year and had been a carryover discussion from previous year, I believe, the idea of paperless board packets and moving away from the physical packets. I know that last year, Rob, Paul Slaton, and Meg did some investigation and crunched some numbers, but my recollection is that we didn't make a definitive decision as a board either to move forward or not to move forward. We simply said, well, we don't think we're ready to make a decision on this at present. But I would like to suggest to the board that this year, take that issue up again. I was talking with Meg about this earlier this evening, and she said that in addition to improvements in tech and information security, which she's seen, there is also the issue of delivery costs, which are now higher than happened in previous years because of the geographical distribution board members. So, you know, obviously, nothing substance is going to happen tonight, but I would like to have you consider taking that issue up and, you know, making a decision. And if the board thinks it's appropriate to do this as an ad hoc committee, then that's something that I would be willing to participate in.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that? Like, is there another location that comes to mind where we'd fit? Or?
Communication.
Sort of-ish communication? Amongst ourselves, communication? Right?
It's still communication.
Okay. Okay. We could, should we give it a thought, or? The communication committee can, why not? Does that, is that satisfactory, do you think, to sort of give it to the communication committee who can at least consider whether it's appropriate for them and get back to us?
Can we get some of the background?
Yeah.
Work, like work that's been done, so we can know.
Yeah, Paul had put together some documents that did a pricing out, also some sort of matrix on what people wanted out of a packet, whether it be on an electronic device or in paper, you know, portability, ease of access. Paul had put together some information. So I guess, I keep, I'm going to have to not, I don't know. Can we get that? Meg, are you still working here?
That was, that was.
You're not helping me here.
That was the, oh, yes. Now we have to find that look.
Right. I can look for it, too. I mean, I don't remember whether, actually, I mean, it was in a board packet. Whether we have it electronically, I don't know. Okay. So is that fine, though, to give it to, people feel like that's satisfactory, you want to think about it and reconsider another time?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay. All right. So communications committee has an agenda item. Any other old business? I actually just had one more I could have brought up under committee. So Deirdre and I will be sort of this ad hoc committee to look at what potential responses to questions around state assessments and the relationship between the Common Core there might be. And we'll start to, we have no, we'll start to meet whenever we can to just look at the possibility of different responses or types of responses to different audiences as per our previous discussions. Do we want to communicate to parents, to the state education department? Do we want to communicate to teachers and staff? And what might those responses look like? So as we develop some options or things to think about, we'll report back to all of you. Okay. Any other old business? All right. We move on to a second opportunity for public comment. Anyone? No? Okay. We move on to other. Any items under other?
Just one that, just kind of a topic that's on your radar screen. A number of, a number of conversations are kind of coming together in some thinking that Tom and I have been doing lately. One of them is the, some of the feedback that we're getting, not only from the internal audit, but that we anticipate we'll be getting relative to the study of the food service situation, considering a point of sale, managing that, as well as the feedback that we've recently gotten from, from our district clerk, who also is the superintendent secretary, just in terms of her workload and how it has really been changing, kind of coincides tangentially with a discussion we had a couple of meetings ago about how the data management piece has been kind of taking over our curriculum and development office, again, because of additional requirements that are being put on the district. And it's not, it's not just in terms of APPL or Common Core. I mean, it's across the board. Everybody is data hungry and data crazy, and that's creating just a ton more work. Where Tom and I have been looking into the possibility of adding some additional clerical help to the district office, just so we're not burning our employees out. And as we add new tasks, specifically those related to the cafeteria, you know, management and accounting, we're going to need somebody to pick up that slack. So we have started having that conversation, both in terms of the finances of such a position as well as a physical location of such an individual in that district office. So I'm kind of putting it on your radar screen, so if we come back to you in August or September and say, hey, this is our thought, and we're ready to go with it, we're kind of putting it out there. Certainly, we'll give you more information, but if you, if questions occur to you, don't hesitate to throw them out there, too, as we may or may not have come up with solutions to questions you asked, because we're kind of working through it ourselves now. But I didn't want this to be a surprise at some point, especially as we get closer to the start of the school year. If we're starting new programs, again, I'm thinking about cafeteria management. We don't want to wait until November to gear up for that. We want to start it as close to the start of the school year as possible. So just want to put it out there and let all of you know what our thinking about that is at this point, but it's hardly settled thinking yet, but we're working on it. It's just a heads up.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for letting us know about that. Any questions about that?
I'll just say I fully support that. Thank you. Thank you. If help is needed.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Any other other? All right. Then we'll move on to our action items. Does anyone have anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, may I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Second by Diane. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation the superintendent of schools to approve as a final reading and adoption of modifications to Board Policy Number 9240, recruiting and hiring?
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Second by Diane. Any questions or comments? Laura and then Diane?
I have a question. Just the tone and language in the policy, it seems purposely vague to me, and I'm wondering if that is to allow flexibility with this policy and hiring, or if there shouldn't be some more specific language about baseline requirements. You know, for instance, you know, academic record for college, major, rigor, program, it seems pretty vague, you know. What academic record are you looking for, and at what point does a candidate get up from the list of possibilities? I don't know whether that's appropriate for policy or not.
Diane?
I agree. I would like to adopt this policy because our current policy doesn't have any real specifics in it. So I think this is better than what we have, but I would really very much like to continue this discussion into next year and continue to work on things such as recruitment strategies, which doesn't necessarily need to be policy, but could be discussion. Should it or can it be more specific? I think that there's no weight given to any one of these criteria over another, and setting the bar at a GPA of 3.0 seems reasonable to me. Just looking briefly at the local colleges in the area and universities, the graduate program at Marist, New Paltz, and Bard, all have a cutoff of 3.0. So we know those applicants are in the area. I think that we should really be thinking about our next generation of teachers and what we want to see in them, what values we're recruiting for, and build from there. So I would encourage adopting this tonight, but continuing the conversation.
And I'll just say, because this originated from the Personnel Committee, actually, Diane and Paul Slaton and myself and Joe. And so your question about flexibility was definitely yes. Like, the purpose was to, from before it landed, then at policy, which is, I don't know.
Mark and Diane.
Mark and Diane and Lisa.
Yes.
Right. And then, so it then was reviewed by that committee, was the, but the origin was to give some guidance, but not to be so prescriptive to hiring committees, but to rather throw out a whole variety of things with the thinking that that could help guide the process, get everyone on the same page about what are we looking for in a new hire, but allow for flexibility for each individual position and person who is being interviewed. That's sort of just where the origin was. Diane?
Well, I think we need to put them in the order, give more weight to one or the other. We just hope it was that they would have as many of these policies as possible.
But, so I guess, but your suggestion is that the policy committee take a look at it again to see if maybe, more specifically, it sounds like what I'm hearing is maybe a GPA standard, or maybe what type of records we look at could be.
Policy committee?
Would be the, I think policy at this point, since it is a policy, right? That would be.
I don't know. I misspoke. I meant personnel, but it could.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, the substance comes from Personnel Committee, and I think that that committee's probably more conversant with what those standards should be and how they should be weighted in the policy. I don't have the proper learning yet, but I don't know that we're really in a position to act on all that.
You do have a big agenda. You do have a big.
Already meaning twice as twice a week, so, twice a month, rather, not twice a week.
Go for three times.
Okay. So maybe the Personnel Committee could revisit that. Okay, so maybe the Personnel Committee could revisit that, those questions, because these policies can always be altered. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve as a first reading and consideration of modifications to Board Policies Number 5280, Interscholastic Athletics, and Number 5300, District Code of Conduct.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Diane. So I had just asked, I'll just share with others, that I had asked the Policy Committee if they'd considered on the interscholastic athletics policy to, if they would want to consider adding some language about you can compete if you're younger than, you know, if you're modified age or JV age, if you do this selection classification test, and also whether they would want to consider adding something. I really like the policy, by the way, and I like that it talks about parents, and it is, does help, I think, you know, the goal we have had this past year is to help clarify and communicate more to parents and students about certain issues related to athletics, so I really do appreciate that policy, but I just know that it's not, it doesn't, the selection classification plays out, and is there a role for a piece in here that talks about, like, coaches' responsibilities, et cetera? So the committee has said that you would consider it after this first reading, right?
Yeah, I think just procedurally, if we do a first reading of what we have tonight, there still has to be another reading before any policy's adopted, and assuming that the Policy Committee, again, a hardworking Policy Committee, is willing to meet during the summer to at least try to address some of those, it's not like we're building it from the ground up, because we already have reviewed in tandem with this a draft of a statement, which I had provided to all of you a couple of meetings ago, that has been in development by our Athletic Director and our High School Principal and I, a statement that covers some of these topics, and actually, the interscholastic athletics draft policy has had a few of those pieces kind of plucked out and, I hate to use the word dumped, but dumped into this policy, and there are statements on coaches, as well as statements on the selection classification that we, my point is, we don't have to wordsmith it from the ground up, I mean, there's already been some preliminary work that's been done, and I think we could come back to you at our next meeting in August with a slightly revised version of this that addresses those points that you raised without it turning into a four-month
Yeah.
Process. I mean, I think we could do that relatively quickly.
And you may, I mean, really, I was just emailing, have you thought about these? You may decide that there's no reason to put them in the policy, if it's more just for any clarification.
Yeah. My point is that doing that doesn't have to derail this policy acceptance.
Right.
Of course, we are working with a timeline where we're trying to get it adopted by the board, so then by the start of the fall sports season, we can be using it, providing it to parents. That's not in and of itself the best reason to adopt the policy, but I mean, we're pretty close, we've been working on it for a while, I think with relatively little tinkering, we can still have it ready to go by the start of the sports season, if those three individuals and I are, you know, available and willing to meet before the next board meeting, which we could probably pull off.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on either of these policies, this motion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the two-year probationary appointment of Laura D'Nido to the position of instrumental music teacher, assigned to Rhinebeck High School effective September 1, 2013, in the tenure area of music at a salary of Step 3 MA, $60,391, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? Is that a two, the two-year probationary appointment is because she's previously received tenure in another district?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Tenille Morrissey to the position of elementary teacher, assigned to Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective September 1, 2013, in the tenure area of elementary, at a salary of Step 2 MA, $58,437, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
Seconded by Mark, seconded by Diane. Any discussion on that?
Motion to table?
A motion to table this, you have a second? Seconded by Lisa, all those in favor of tabling this motion? That's unanimous, that motion gets tabled. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of David Wolfin as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 1, 2013, through the end of the 2013-14 school year, at the pleasure of the board, at a salary of Step 7 MA plus 30, $71,592, in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the vacancy created by the unpaid leave of absence granted to Chantel Collins, elementary teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Mark? Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the appointment of Jill Simmons as a long-term substitute in the position of elementary teacher at Chancellor Livingston Elementary School, effective September 1, 2013, through January 31, 2014, at the pleasure of the board, at the salary of Step 1 MA plus 9, $52,740, in accordance with the 2013-14 RTA salary schedule. This appointment is to fill the balance of the vacancy created by the leave of absence granted to Shannon Denise, elementary teacher at the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School.
So moved.
By Mark? Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's Diane Lyons, Lisa Rosenthal, Laura Shulkin, Deirdre Burns, Mark Fleischauer, Deirdre Del Bear, opposed, abstaining. Diane Quinteros, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve an increase to the position of technology teacher from .8 FTE to 1.0 FTE, resulting in the three-year probationary appointment of Brian McDonald, position of 1.0 technology teacher, assigned to the Vulcan Middle School and Rhinebeck High School effective September 1, 2013, in the tenure area of industrial arts general, at a salary of Step 2 BA, $52,758, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve an increase to the position of foreign language teacher from .4 FTE to .6 FTE, resulting in said increase to Kathleen Peterson's position of foreign language teacher, assigned to Vulcan Middle School, effective September 1, 2013, at a salary of Step 13 MA plus 24, $83,490, prorated at $50,094, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2013-14.
So moved.
By Mark? Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve an increase to the position of teaching assistant from .75 FTE to 1.0 FTE, resulting in three-year probationary appointment of Gretchen Werner to the position of 1.0 teaching assistant, assigned to the Vulcan Middle School, effective September 1, 2013, in the tenure area of teaching assistant, at a salary of Step 5 MA, $32,147, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for the 2013-14 school year.
So moved.
By Mark? Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the fall coaching staff for the 2013-14 school year. In soccer, boys varsity, Justin Weisenthal at $4,381, boys JV, Henry Frishknight at $2,736, boys modified to be announced at $2,231. Girls varsity, Matt Grandi, $4,381, girls JV, Mark Berg, $2,736, girl modified, Dan Lovazo, $2,231. In volleyball, varsity, Ally Farati, $3,491, JV, Courtney Carroll, $2,482, modified to be announced, $2,231. In cross-country, varsity to be announced, $3,354, modified, Jen McCracken, $2,135. In golf, varsity to be announced, $2,722, field hockey, varsity to be announced, $4,381, JV to be announced, $2,547, modified, Nicole Sandoval, $2,079. And in swimming, girls varsity to be announced, $4,381.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve non-unit salaries for 2013-14.
So moved.
Mark?
Second.
By Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the reappointment of part-time teachers for the 2013-14 school year, effective September 1, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Diane. Any questions? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the reappointment of part-time non-instructional personnel for the 2013-14 school year, effective September 1, 2013.
So moved.
By Mark? Seconded by Diane. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. We have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of the discussion of the employment history of particular persons.
So moved.
By Mark?
Second.
Seconded by Diane. All those in favor? That's unanimous, we're moving into executive session. Thank you.